All right, we've got the thumbs up. Board, thank you for tonight's meeting. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about our first video tonight. As you know, we have had a winter camp at the LEED Center over the past several weeks, and tonight's video is all about the fun that goes on there. So I want to show you a little clip about the winter camp and then talk a little bit about the showcase coming up next week. Hey, everybody. One of our new programs this year is using the LEED Center for elementary school exploration camps. Let's go inside and watch our students in robotics, drones, art, and theater. Let's go. What are you doing tonight? What kind of fun is this?
We are programming robots.
And how does this robot work? I mean, what can it do for us?
Well, you can make it do lots of things, like it can dance.
So what have you learned so far from this?
Um, mostly it's not going to work every time and just keep trying.
I love that. Good for you. See, how fun is it to come on a Tuesday night to program robots? Are you having a good time?
Yeah, it's so fun. It was so fun. I came really early.
Tell me what's fun in here. What have you guys been doing?
Um, we've been doing games and we're about to start a dance for the theater.
A dance for the theater?
And we're going to be singing to a song.
Honestly, it's just been really enjoyable getting to teach something different, seeing the kids have a fun time, and just seeing them open up to their passions.
Yeah, what do you hope to, that they get out of this? What do you want?
Um, well, I think the biggest thing is them with growing self-confidence, being part of the play, and that all these kids are from different schools, but yet they're getting to become friends and family.
So tell me about what you are doing tonight here. What is all this about?
Drones.
Drones. Tell me about drones. What do you do? What have you learned how to do?
Um, fly them.
Tell me what this all is all about for kids tonight. What are you doing here?
Uh, this is absolutely amazing. Getting kids involved in things that are academically challenging, but absolutely totally fun. They don't even know that they're learning a thing while they're here, but they're measuring. They're checking and guessing. They are using problem-solving, critical-thinking skills out the wazoo.
So, thank you for indulging us with that video. I want to point out Dr. Volker, Dr. Barr, and the Academic Services Society of the House put their winter camps together for our kids. Five, six weeks of just fun for our students to hands-on learning. I will invite the board to the Winter Camp Showcase, which is next Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00. It is a time when parents of the students, it's not an open invitation for the entire, but just our parents of our students and our Board of Education to come by from 6:00 to 7:00 on next Tuesday to see, kind of like their presentation of what they have learned so far and the fun that they've been having. So, just a first step into doing some activities at the LEED Center over the winter months, and we know that more of that is ahead of us. So, thank you for the team putting it together and for the video. If I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. At the LEED Center next Tuesday night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the Bridal Ridge update.
Thank you so much for, it does work. All right. Thank you so much for letting us present and share a little bit about what is happening at Bridal Ridge. I have with me Peggy Jones, a third-grade teacher, Alex Tompkins, one of our instructional coaches in the district who happens to be at Bridal Ridge, and we are so excited for that, and Grace Summerford, who is, I think she's going to be a newscaster or something because she really helped us put on some daily videos every day for this project. So, what we're going to showcase today is, I know you've heard a lot about our Resource My View and our Week Six projects that allow for voice and choice and inquiry, and then you will see how we took this and made a service project that impacted our entire community.
Unleash kindness during Positive Impact Week, where school spirits meet heartfelt giving to support Wayside Waves, animal shelter, and our furry friends in need. We will show our support through Spirit Week optional daily donations and homemade classroom contributions.
Good evening. So, for our My View Unit Three, the theme was the humanities. So, we really thought about how can we tie K-5 project into one, also incorporating some science and just different writing activities. So, this is what we did. First of all, we started with the Spirit Week because every elementary school loves a Spirit Week. So, we had different themes each day. Kids got to wear their pajamas, bring their favorite stuffed animal, and then each day we had a themed item that they could donate if they were able. So, they brought in dog toys, cat toys, and we just got a lot of things to donate to Wayside. In addition to the Spirit Week, each grade level had a special project that they did. So, our kindergarten students were working on living things and their needs in science. So, they were researching different animals, and part of their project lead, the way unit, is to build a shelter for an animal, so they were able to do that. And then Wayside Waves actually came and read to each class, so they were able to interact with animals. There's a student, a couple of students with their shelters that they made. Our first graders were focusing on opinion writing, and something that kids like to write about is what's the best pet? So, they did that in the unit, and they actually made some homemade dog treats, which you can see here, and Wayside came to visit them as well. Our second-grade project is actually where the whole idea came from. So, their project in this unit is to be able to talk about what is a good school tradition and to convince the principal of what should the school tradition be. So, we really thought about that, and we were thinking, well, what's better than a service project? So, we're hoping that this will be an annual project, not necessarily for Wayside, but just giving back to the community. So, second grade is where it came from. They also worked on opinion writing, and they actually wrote about what's the best toy for your pet, and then invited families in to make those toys. So, you can see some families in the corner there. Wayside came and visited them as well, and that's some of their writings. That was really special.
All right. I'm going to go a little off-script here. With third grade, you can kind of see some of the things that we did were same as some of the other grade levels. For me, this whole experience has just been wonderful for the kids. I think about kids being connected, making sure that they're learning, and we felt as a class connected to each other. We brought pictures of our pets. We kind of guessed whose was whose. We felt very connected to the things that we're learning. Like, in My View, our stories were all about heroes, so it worked perfectly. Poor Mrs. Tompkins had to do all the shopping for all of our supplies to make our homemade dog treats. So, we were studying patterns in math, so it was, well, we need a quarter cup, but we've got five groups. How much are we going to have to buy, times the three classrooms, and then dividing it all out? So, just a lot of connections throughout the whole week. We felt very connected to each other as a grade level. There was a competition that one of the other grades put on. We won. So, we felt really good with our other third-grade classes in the building, and it was nice to just have a feel of community inside our four walls beyond our classroom, because a lot of times the kids aren't really seeing what's going on in other classes. And to know that we may not be able to see inside your room, but we know we're all kind of in this together. We're doing something for the greater good, and it all kind of tied together. Going outside of our school walls, we connected to our community through our service events. We did make some homemade treats. I'm not going to call them dog treats because they're human edible, and I might have licked a spoon. They were pretty good. Definitely kind of along the, you know, no-bake cookie range, so that was all right. Yeah, so we wrote thank-you letters to people in the community, animal shelter, animal control. We wrote to our own secretary, who came in to do a little bit about animal control for us and how to take care of pets, what happens when we lose them. So, it was just a great feel of community in our room, in our building, and in Raymore Peculiar all around.
The fourth graders made a daily update video about how many donations we got each day, and we also made posters about what Wayside Waves needs, and we helped with a coin drive.
And there's just a picture of the fourth graders. Each morning, they were able to do a little video about what we had collected, so that was very exciting. And then our fifth graders were working on narrative writing and learning about natural disasters in their My View unit, and they tied that in, well, what happens to animals in a natural disaster? So, they were able to go on a virtual tour with Wayside, and they learned about what do animal shelters contribute, animal control, what happens when hurricanes happen. And then for their narrative writing, they actually created survival diaries that you can see here, and they're all digital, and they just did a great job tying it all together.
Also, at Bridal Ridge, we have a special program called Communication Behavior and Social Skills, and even these students were able to participate and be included in this, and they even took a community-based field trip to Wayside Waves and were able to experience that, and they make homemade toys as well. And our specials team also contributed. You'll see a quick little video of some rhythmic body percussion, two dog names in music. They made some flyers for those pets that are not getting adopted, and of course, our amazing Ms. G in the library had just an abundance of books on shelters. They got a little excited.
Everyone was involved. So, in to, oh, no, oh, man, I missed it. Okay, there we go. In total, this is everything that we collected. At the end of the week, we had 617 items to donate to Wayside Waves, including all the things the kids brought in and the homemade treats and toys that they made, so it was a really successful week.
You're making a positive impact, so see you tomorrow.
Thank you so much for letting us share a little bit, and just having an instructional coach here almost full-time is just amazing, the things that she can help us connect with and do. So, thank you for that.
Well, thank you for all being here, and I love your comment about creating that connection and community within the building, not just your grade, like you said, but from K to five. I mean, that's a big span, and to find that community is awesome.
Besides the Spirit Week, what better thing can we have besides a big wrap-up assembly at the end?
We threw that, too.
So, I just, I just have one question. So, the spray cheese, was that for the dogs?
Yeah. It's actually very hard to find. I learned.
Well, there's a reason why it's hard to find.
Easy cheese.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will move on to, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. On to the school calendar. Dr. Slagel?
Yes, Dr. Volker's going to come to the podium to present the school calendar. Board, as you know, you've seen the draft school calendar for the better part of a week now, as it was included in your update last week, and so Dr. Volker's going to walk you through the process and the recommendation for this evening. Dr. Volker.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. I want to start with a thank you to the calendar committee. So, the calendar committee is made up of certified and classified staff, and they really give countless hours. It is a lot of time, and we do a lot of research, and we have lots of discussion, and then we get lots of feedback, and then we talk a lot more, and we keep going and going until we get to where we are tonight. A recommendation for you. So, it was definitely a unique year. The 25-26 student attendance calendar development presented unique challenges to us due to the passage of Missouri Senate Bill 727. This new legislation redefined a school term and mandated that districts and cities release 30,000 inhabitants have a minimum of 169 attendance days. So, since the Raymore Peculiar School District does contain a portion of Lee Summit, which meets that population threshold, the district must add six student contact days to our current 163-day model. So, with that goal in mind and meeting those requirements, the calendar development process began. We started with gathering feedback from staff and the community. We created a calendar that we believe align, to align with district priorities. Two draft calendars were then finally agreed on after lots of conversation and development, and then those two were shared with the entire staff of the Raymore Peculiar School District, leading to a final recommendation by Team Repack. Staff and Team Repack overwhelmingly selected the calendar you're viewing tonight. The recommended calendar includes 169 student attendance days, has eight early release days, and nine total collaboration or workdays, as you kind of combine those thoughts together, really. Some highlights include the addition of early release days to ensure we meet our 169 student contact day threshold, as those do count towards 169. You'll notice a week off for students around Thanksgiving, and that week actually includes time for staff to collaborate on that Monday, and then a workday on that Tuesday. So, that is collaboration and work time built in. And then a little later return, which the staff always and students usually like that as well, when you come back after winter break, you'll see on this calendar, and a last day of school on Wednesday. This was a Dr. Slagel request as we were talking through it, and it makes complete sense as the calendar committee considered this as well. We have had quite a bit of snow. It's been quite a winter. I know you guys have noticed. If you finish on a Wednesday, that gives you a little flexibility in case you need to use that Thursday and that Friday before you roll in and have that Memorial Day. So, we still have some collaboration days we can use. We are still able to use AMI days, but having those two days on the end, if you just needed to slide one or two over, is actually really, really helpful and beneficial. So, we were able to do this in this calendar as well. We think this proposed calendar thoroughly meets our new state requirements while strongly focusing on instructional quality and staff collaboration. And I believe, oh, I do want to address this. To address the requirement, kind of while balancing the needs of students and staff, the calendar committee has also reviewed the length of the school day. The committee does recommend a shorter school day for students to provide additional time for planning and collaboration for our staff. The revised school day length will more closely align with peers in the metro area, as we tend to have a longer school day than most. So, when looking, and I pulled a peer group, we are on, at the secondary level, 13, 14 minutes longer than most, and at the elementary level, 19 minutes we average longer than most. So, that was some time that we could actually bring back in, knowing that we're losing some of those full collaboration days. We could actually use some of that time before and after school. That has not been set or determined on the length, the number, I mean, the number of minutes, or where to use that in the school day. I think academic services with their team and their leaders and staff are going to need to take a long look at exactly what makes sense on that and what will be most impactful for our staff, but we are recommending that there be a shorter day as we go. That's not exactly a part of the calendar approval process, but I wanted to be transparent with the board. That was definitely a part of the discussion in how we could have some additional collaboration while losing some full collaboration days, because we absolutely are doing that. And I think it's important to state, you know, we construct our calendar yearly, and we listen and ask for a lot of feedback. There are some places that do two years at a time, and while that would be nice, because that would be a lot less work, you're not able to adjust and make changes. So, anytime we have a big change, and I'll consider this a fairly good-sized calendar change, probably not as big as the one we did four, five years ago when we added the collaboration days, but still significant in that, and we know it was based on the requirements of the law. Anytime you make a change like that, we are going to be asking our community and our staff how this calendar is impacting them, what they like, what they don't like, because we're going to come back and we'll take that feedback, and if next year there are things that our community says, well, this was tough, we would like, rather you do this, is there another way you can accomplish this? Well, we'll absolutely listen and do our best to adjust to our needs of our staff, our community, and first and foremost, our students, because in the end, I know that's the most important piece. Are we meeting their needs, whether with the shortening of the day or the adjustment of the calendar? We'll continue to try and meet their needs first.
Okay, I have a few questions.
Okay.
Couple of new ones. First of all, I know that there are times that they're called blackout dates that teachers and staff can or cannot request those days off. Will that Monday and Tuesday of Thanksgiving week be blackout days?
Good question.
So that they're here to utilize them?
Yeah.
Since we're having to adjust so much, or do you know yet?
That's a great question. We have talked about this, it really, and even in the committee, talked about the Tuesday not being a blackout day. It is a true workday. If you wanted to take PTO and not use that workday, that would be, we talked, that's fine. It is a workday. The Monday is still in discussion, because it is a true collaboration day.
All right.
So, Tuesday, yes. Monday in discussion.
Okay. And yes, I told several legislators yesterday to stay out of our calendar.
That would be, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Second question. Next year, with the way Memorial Day falls, we can start fairly decently in August. What happens when it's that 7th of September?
You're talking about Labor Day?
Labor Day, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And you can't start so early in August. How will something like that?
That will be significantly impactful. That's why I really appreciate you continuing to talk to our legislators that that requirement, that we only have that 14 days before Labor Day, that really needs to be a local Board of Education decision, in my opinion, and we, as a group in the calendar committee, can make, see what's best for our community. We currently don't have that freedom to do that, as that's written in a state statute, so yes, that will be impactful when that occurs.
And then my last question for now. I know we always hear from teachers that they don't have enough time, especially with elementary. They don't have enough time to get done in their day what they need to, and now we're considering adjusting the amount of time they have in a day. How will that play out, especially in elementary?
Yeah, I think that's the one area that I'm looking at, that curriculally, I think they're going to have to, and that's why I said turning it over to the academic services team is the most appropriate. That group is going to have to sit down at the elementary level with those leaders and those teachers and say, where can we find, whether it's 12 minutes or 15 minutes? Is it in some of our homeroom time or advisory time, or is it, or are there ways we can transition differently? And I've seen that done to save a couple minutes. I know that we have great partners around us that are already running a schedule that would be the same length, a length of the day, and we could reach out, how are you accomplishing those tasks in those minutes? But I do think it's important that we in the calendar committee leave that up to academic services to say, okay, how can we make sure we get everything accomplished we need to?
And I specifically think of those kiddos who have extra help that they need in different things and getting that time during the day, or they've got therapies during the day that takes them out of the classroom for a time.
Yeah.
Making sure that our teachers still have enough time.
Dr. Hoffman did remind me just that we added these 15 minutes when we went to K-5s, you know, when we had the intermediate. So, we lengthened our day when we went to K-5. Usually, often, it's to get the extra special class in and to get transitions. That's most likely what, when those things, I think they can revisit that and refine that appropriately. I really do.
So, are you looking, you haven't decided yet if we will start later or end earlier?
Yes. It has not been decided, and it really might change by level. I mean, it makes a lot more sense at the secondary often to end sooner. Kids are often leaving for activities. Coaches are leaving. If you end sooner, they don't have to miss as much school. They, often, we don't have, even have to get out earlier. Some of our colleagues to the north that get out earlier already at the secondary level don't have the dismissal issues that we do. So, I think it, at the elementary, it may, might make more sense on the front side, but I really do want to leave that to the academic services team to go through all of those scenarios and say, where does this make the most sense?
This is, you know, a pretty big change, and we had a really big change when we went to collab days on Mondays, and that was a large outcry, and then everybody got used to it. Everybody said, why wasn't it on Friday? And it was Monday. So, can you explain, talk a little bit about the shift from Mondays to Fridays?
Yeah. Well, our full days, we had a lot of Monday thoughts in the beginning because we wanted a lot of full-day holidays. As soon as you transition to partial days, Monday really doesn't make as much sense anymore. You can't really do an early release on a Monday. Well, you could, but that really doesn't feel as family-friendly, and we wanted to make this as family-friendly as possible for our patrons and our community while still getting the academic needs that we need to get done. So, that was the cost of the shift to Friday. If people wanted to take an early weekend, or if they wanted to get their kids at 1:00 and then head on off to wherever they were going, the lake or grandma's, or that made more sense than using a Monday or a Wednesday. You can't do anything with that amount of time. You're probably not going anywhere or using that any other way than just picking your child up. So, that was the thought. That is exactly one of the things that we will ask for feedback specifically on, say, okay, we went from more Mondays to Fridays, which did you prefer? We already have a lot of parent feedback that we get that asked us to try and move off of Mondays, so I don't think this is going to be its change, so we're going to hear about it, and I understand that. But we'll just take that feedback, and we'll ask them, did you prefer the Mondays? If there was a different day for an early release, which day would it be? I think some years past, we used to do them on Wednesdays. We had like Wednesday early releases, which I thought was interesting. I mean, you really can't do anything with that, but we'll see, and then we'll make adjustments if our community thinks there's something that might be better.
I think so.
Going back to the shift in either shortening the days, is that something that we're looking to do this upcoming school year?
Yes.
It is? Okay.
Yes.
Will that depend on busing?
Actually, it will probably help busing.
Okay.
It'll give them a little more time in between the tiers. Will actually help.
When that decision is made, or at least headed down a road as to what time the new bell schedule would look like, we'll communicate that with the board in an update. You should have a week ahead of time before we start talking about it more publicly.
I know that the academic services will do absolutely brilliant. I just want to make sure that we're not cutting recess. That's, we need lots of activity time for them, so.
I'll make a note.
All right. Anything else for us?
Nope. Would love to make a motion on our new calendar.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Volker and the calendar committee. We got into a pretty good groove with the calendar that you blessed us with three years ago, board. It's responsive to staff concerns and staff need. A little bit of a curveball this year, and I think we've made, you know, lemonade out of lemons on this, quite honestly. We'll keep pushing at the legislative level for the right of the school board to have sole control over its own calendar. Until then, we will play by the rules, and I appreciate the efforts that I've brought forward tonight.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the 25-26 school calendar as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Volker. All right. On to committee reports.
We all hibernated. Did anybody do anything?
Team Repack, Matt. I guess not very many. Turn your mic on.
In our closed meeting, and just some of the adjustments to the healthcare issues. But there was a lot of input, and I thought, you know, that they came to a decision that would benefit everybody.
All right.
Met with student support, what's that committee called?
Support Service, Support Team.
Student Support.
Yes. I did that instead of Team Repack this week, and they said that waiting for the next strategic plan, what, in 2027, would be when they take recommendations to improve on the strategic plan of what they need in their department. And I was very impressed with the ideas that everybody has come up with in the areas that we feel like we need to improve upon to help our students who are struggling in the school. Lots of good ideas, so I'll be anxious to see what we, you know, what funding we can come up. come up with and planning we can do to help this committee and their ideas for these kids.
I was at the foundation meeting this month, and I just wanted to remind everyone that April 5th is the gala. So mark that on your calendars. It's always fun, and they're changing locations this year, and it will be at the Rack Center. So that will be fun. All right. Moving on to superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. Do you have my updates that are posted on board docs for you? I know you've seen those the past several weeks. I just wanted to let you know, confirm with you that March 10th is a make-up date, is a way to at least get some of the days that we've missed back. March 10th was originally a staff collaboration day. We are now using that as a student contact day. So I thank everyone involved for the cooperation around making that day a student contact day, because that's not as easy as it sounds, just to pivot within a couple of weeks of having a staff collaboration day for a student contact day. So that's going to go on as well as March 19th. I just want to bring that to your attention, make sure it's on your calendars. That is the Teacher of the Year, Staff, Support Staff Employee of the Year, dessert banquet at the brand-new PAC at 6:30, 6 o'clock this year. So hope to see you all there. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to Board of Education comments. As I said earlier, Dr. Slagel and I went to Jeff City yesterday with the cooperating school districts group. And I did try to mention to each one of our legislators, and even some that aren't ours, about how our calendar, you know, by them mandating up there affects back home for them. Really just worked on connecting with them yesterday. There's not a whole lot of legislation getting that close to passing right now, but just we've got some new ones, so working on those relationships and connecting with our legislators. And so just kind of giving them some information and getting feedback from them. Dr. Slagel left with some homework for some information to get back to them so that they understand a little bit how some of the stuff that's coming through the pipeline will impact us. So just working on those connections.
Yeah, March 11th is MSBA Day.
Oh, yeah, March 11th is the MSBA Advocacy Day in Jeff City. So whoever wants to go up then, let Pam know so that she can get you registered to go.
What day is that on?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We also have several students going.
Yes, we were able to get some students to go. So that'll be fun. And we did connect with a Repack grad, Colby Stolzberg, caught us in the hallway as we were talking, and got to connect up with him yesterday. So it was fun to see he's working for the Attorney General's Office now. So he has graduated from MMU and is having a whole new view of life now.
Fight young again.
So, yeah. Fun to see our graduates succeeding out there and what they are passionate about. Any other comments?
I just want to say that tonight's Through the Eyes was probably my favorite. I might be a little biased, but for Brantley to have little words is not like him, so whatever you did, please give me your tips and secrets so I can try it at home.
Well, since you brought it up, I want to shout out to Lexi Gross, who's our new digital media coordinator. This is one of her first primary projects that she put together. I thought she did an outstanding job of making it a quick-hitting, informative, fun video, so I'll let her know that.
All right, on to the calendar of events. March 13th will be our next work session, and that'll be having our first look at the budget. And then March 20th is our next regular meeting, 7 o'clock open, and we are adjourned. Thanks for being here, guys.